Congratulations.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Canada. One nation, indivisible, indivisible.
Please stay standing up for one second, please. It's not that often we have to do this, but tonight we lost a member of our police force Havik. He's been quite the dog for quite a long time here in town. He's done quite a few things, so I would like to take a moment of silence in memory of the police canine Havik. Thank you very much. Okay. We'll start with eighty-five promotions. Chief, Assistant Chief, Deputy Chief, Assistant, whatever.
These promotions are being brought forward as we're preparing for the retirement of Glenn Mills from the rank of Lieutenant. Both of the officers being promoted this evening bring a vast array of experience to the department, and although they will each be tough to replace in their current roles, the benefit to the department certainly outweighs the task of having to replace them with others that are already hopefully ready to assume those roles. So the first up is Sergeant Kevin Dougherty to the rank of Lieutenant. Sergeant Dougherty's got twenty-eight years of law enforcement experience. He grew up in Burlington, graduating from Burlington High School in nineteen eighty-eight. Quite a class. He's got a bachelor's degree in criminal justice from Salem State and a master's degree in criminal justice from Anna Maria. He lives in Billericay with his wife Susie and his two boys Gavin and Ronan. He started here, sorry, he started in Foxborough as a full-time police officer in nineteen ninety-five until two thousand and two, when he decided to come home to Burlington. In Burlington, he served as a patrol officer and an FTO, Field Training Officer. He was BPD's liaison to the Burlington Community Life Center when that first came on board, and he's a founding member of the Honor Guard and was actually the unit commander for March of two thousand and ten through February of two thousand and twelve. He was then promoted to, he was promoted to Sergeant in two thousand and seven. As a Sergeant, he spent more than half of his operations time as the officer in charge of the day shift, which basically means he's assumed the duties of Lieutenant since that time. He's been assigned the duties of Technology Services in or around two thousand and twenty, which those duties he's performed on a near full-time basis in addition to his job as Sergeant. He's been key to our implementation of the Body One Camera Program, which just started in earnest last week. We've rolled it out to traffic a couple of months before, so Kevin's been a key to the implementation of that program, as well as ProPhoenix, which is our records management system that we're bringing onboard along with Burlington Fire, and that's an ongoing process. He's handled the daily operations of everything technology-based, including responding to calls for service to fix any problems IT-related. He's handled all updates, troubleshooting, et cetera, in addition to overseeing the operation of the computer systems within the entire cruiser fleet. He's also been instrumental in budget development and a liaison with the town MIS. He was assigned to this role of Sergeant Detective in two thousand and twenty-two. He's been responsible for the daily supervision of the Detective Division personnel to include the criminal, domestic violence, drug, and cyber units. He works in conjunction with the Lieutenant Detective in maintaining a high standard Ultimately, Kevin has been a constant asset to the administration. His ability to manage people and police incidents has never been in question. He has great common sense and an ability to handle situations with poise and confidence. He's an integral part of the team, and he will undoubtedly bring this vast skill set to his new duties, which he will start tomorrow. So therefore, I respectfully recommend the appointment of Kevin Dougherty to the rank of Lieutenant within the Burlington Police Department.
John?
Thanks very much, Chief.
Oh, he's over there. I didn't even see him.
With the chief's recommendation, I wish to appoint Kevin Dougherty to the position of Lieutenant in the Burlington Police Department and ask that the board waive his fifteen-day waiting period.
So moved.
Second.
So moved to second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, against? Passes.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
That company was any longer, it would have taken two nights. You're all deserved.
Chief?
Sir, next up is Detective Sage Costa for the position of Sergeant. Sage has been in law enforcement seventeen years full-time. Prior to coming back to Burlington, he served two years as a dispatcher for Bentley University. He is also a Burlington High School graduate. I'm not sure what year, and I don't want to date myself, so. He lives in Burlington as well with his wife Theresa and five children. They're in the audience tonight. He was hired at Burlington in two thousand and seventy. He's worked in patrol and most recently in detectives, where he's been assigned as the Technology Services Detective since two thousand and twenty-one. As a patrol officer, he was chosen to assist the department's IT manager with all things IT-related. His work with the IT team showcased his abilities related to computers and IT overall, which made him the most logical choice to be assigned to the Technology Services Detective position, which we brought onboard back in July of two thousand and twenty-one. Since assuming the role of Technology Services Detective, he has brought back training methods and equipment that the department is able to use on a daily basis for many types of cases, and he's been instrumental in advancing our investigative techniques and abilities with his experience in certain types of software and hardware, allowing us to remain above the curve in these types of investigations, which quite frankly was always a serious concern in the department that the criminals were outpacing the police. Sage has helped us close that gap. Sage was chosen as a Special Federal Deputy U.S. Marshal for the United States Secret Service in two thousand and twenty-three. This designation allows him to act as a liaison to the Secret Service, where he works closely with special agents in joint investigations, and allows him the benefit of free trainings with the National Computer Forensic Institute, which is a worldwide leader in forensic computer training. We will certainly miss his experience in the IT world, but we know that he's going to bring that back on the line as a road sergeant, and I would respectfully recommend the appointment of Sage Costa to the position or rank of Sergeant within the Burlington Police Department.
Paul?
Thank you, Chief. With the chief's recommendation, I wish to appoint Sage Costa to the position of Sergeant in the Burlington Police Department and ask that the board waive his fifteen-day waiting period.
So moved.
Second.
So moved to second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, against? Five zero zero. Congratulations.
Here you go. Ross? A couple with the board, if you don't mind, and then we're going to take it over for swearing-in at the police station.
So before you do that, really quickly, guys, I just want to say something quick. It impresses me every single time with that group that's there, and I don't even know how many are still in that hallway. Just everybody comes. It's a testament to you and Bob to do what you do and bring these guys in, and I'll tell you this, I don't think there's a better police force in this state that I know of at all.
Thank you. We appreciate it. Mr. Chair, thank you. I'll be back during the end of the meeting for a warrant there.
Thank you, Chief.
Just give him a minute to clear out of the room here.
Just give him a minute to clear out of the room here. Okay.
I'll be back during the end of the meeting for a warrant there.
Thank you, Chief. Just give him a minute to clear out of the room here. Okay. Why is it? Usually you see it.
There's a camera block.
And they have like a symbol.
Like that, our audience has gone. Just like that. Just give him a minute till we start throwing this. Yeah. Who's got the proclamation? Does somebody have the proclamation they're going to read?
It's in the proclamation.
I have a copy of it. I don't have, I didn't see it. I didn't see a proclamation.
Me neither.
In the back. The backup.
I think we'll have one this morning. We'll have one designed.
Yeah, I think I didn't see it on the thing. Yeah, there is one.
I'm sure that we're right here.
It's impossible to print that out. There'll never be one designed ever.
We're going a hundred percent digital. Moving along, eighty-six proclamation, National Public Works Week. Believe that you, Mr. White, you're the public works guy.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, Board. So I'm here tonight to see if the Board is willing to proclaim the week of May nineteenth, National Public Works Week in Burlington. This is something we've been doing for many years now, and it mirrors the nationally-recognized third full week of May and that they recognize. On behalf of the department, we are all very appreciative of all the support the Board, the committees, the residents have given us over the years. Hopefully, we've been meeting everyone's standards and that the appreciation is mutual, and I'm here to hope the Board is open to continuing the tradition and proclaiming that week Public Works Week.
Okay. We'll hear from the Board. Sarah?
Nothing to add. I mean, I'll just say that thank you for all you do in the DPW. I know it can sometimes be a thankless, thankless job. You might hear more complaints than you do praise, so I think this is a well-deserved week to recognize what you all do over there.
Thank you.
Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I just want to echo what Sarah said. Happily name, proclaim it National DPW Week. Very thankful for all you guys do behind the scenes, most of the time people don't even know, and the job just gets done, so we're very appreciative and don't take it for granted. So thank you to your team. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Nick?
Nothing new to add, but obviously my appreciation to the entire DPW.
Jim?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, Brian, kudos to your staff. People sometimes don't realize it's a twenty-four-hour, seven, twenty-four-hour, seven-day-week position, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. If a water pipe breaks on three AM in the morning, they're there. If it's snowing overnight on a holiday, they're there. And the people, the residents, you know, I think they really appreciate the response they get, maybe not always happy, but I know, at least speaking from our board, we really appreciate that twenty-four-hour reassurance that if the problem occurs, you guys will be there, you guys and girls will be there to take care of it. So thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, we've done this how many years now? So I don't see any reason not to. Things haven't changed, it's only gotten better in this town, so absolutely, absolutely a great week for you guys, so enjoy it.
Thank you. I'll make sure that the staff gets it because they're the ones that really get the work done and do all the work, so they deserve all the credit.
Fantastic. Fantastic. There's no vote on it, it's just proclamation, so we're all set, right?
Do you want to read the proclamation?
You want to read it? Yeah, go ahead.
We have a formal proclamation, I can read for everyone. It is, whereas public work services provided in our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives, and whereas the support and understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public work systems and programs such as water, sewers, streets, and highways, buildings, cemeteries, and solid waste collection, and whereas the health, safety, and comfort of this community greatly depends on these facilities and services, and whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction, is vitally dependent on the efforts and skill of public works employees, and whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff public works departments is materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. Now therefore, we, the Select Board of the Town of Burlington, do hereby proclaim the week of May nineteenth to twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-four, as National Public Works Week in the Town of Burlington, and we call upon citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our public works and to recognize the contributions in which public works employees make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life. And this is given under our hand on this sixth day of May, two thousand and twenty-four.
Thank you, Michael. Really appreciate it. We're all set.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
I have two real quick points, big things going on. So Wilmington Road, night work, I was in here not too long ago, that is scheduled for tomorrow night. We've done a whole bunch of notices, so hopefully that goes off without hitch. Yard waste, that is, the last week for that is coming up, Sunday the nineteenth, that's the last week, so have it out Sunday. There's no specific dates that if the load is light, they might get to your neighborhood earlier in the week than that designated day that's yours, so have it out Sunday. If anyone gets missed, please let us know by the end of that week on Friday.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Approval, Dr. Class, two thousand and twenty-seven fundraiser. Who's here for that?
They're coming up.
Oh, okay. Come on up. Have a seat. A little closer. Whether you can use the microphone and just introduce yourself and tell us who you are and what the game plan is.
So, hello, my name is Zachary Titus. I am the president of the Burlington High School Class of Two Thousand and Twenty Seven, and we are, we were wondering if we could possibly sell water bottles on the Common during the date of the prom, when people take like pictures and similar things.
Okay.
So that would be our...
We'll start with Jim.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a quick question. Not sure of the, does this have to be run by the Board of Health, where it's food as well? Lynn, would you know that?
We don't, we didn't think so based on what they were selling.
Okay. No, I have no problem. I mean, any chance for money to be raised for scholarships? I'm in favor of it, so I have no issue with it at all.
Thank you.
No issue for me.
Michael?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think it's a great idea, especially last year it was so warm. I could have used the water out in the Common, and it's a great event, so no issue from me. Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you.
Sarah?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I love this idea. I hope it's a big-money generator for you. My only comment would be, perhaps you guys can provide, I think there's trash available on the Common, trash bins, but I don't think there's recycling. So maybe you guys could just bring a bin for people.
With us?
Yeah, just to have next to the table, just an idea since you're selling, I assume, plastic water bottles, it might be good to have that. But other than that, good luck.
Thank you.
Great. So I think everyone's in favor of this, including myself. I think it's a great idea to sell water. I mean, if you want to give a dollar bottle, two dollars a bottle, what are you doing? How are you going to raise the money? The money's going strictly to your class, I'm assuming, so should the parent, you're not going to take credit cards, I'm assuming, right? Cash only.
Cash only, yep.
Okay. So anything, any more comments you want to make about it, or want to promote it a little bit? Hit it out there?
Two dollars a water bottle, sounds good. That's what we're planning, and yeah, thank you, I guess.
Will they be cold? Are you going to bring ice? Coolers?
Ice, ice coolers, we'll have all of that and recycling bins now as well.
I know you're a little nervous, so I'm having a good time. That's fine. It's all good. I think we're all going to be in favor of this. Mr. Sagarino, any comments on this, sir?
I have nothing additional to add, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. I'll need a...
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the high school fundraiser for the Class of Two Thousand and Twenty Seven on Friday, May tenth, on the Common between three o'clock and five-thirty PM.
Motion by Mike.
Second.
Second by Sarah. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, against? Five zero zero. Good luck.
Thank you.
I think we'll all be there to grab a water.
Oh, thank you. We'll be very grateful.
Okay. Thank you. I have one quick question. Wait, I thought of something. Are you all going out to buy the water, or is it going to be donated?
Um, that...
We have a leftover donation from a previous fundraiser that we'll be using.
Okay. Because I was going to say, if you wanted to donate some, get in touch with me, I'll donate some water to the cause. All right?
Thank you. We need any...
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yep. Eighty-eight approval, new taxi delivery license. Who's here for that? If you could just introduce yourself and...
Hi, my name's John Silvato Jr. And this is my son, Paul Silvato, and we've been in Burlington for over sixty years, the taxi service. My father started it.
Fantastic. Could you just give a little rundown on what you're doing for the Board, for the people and the public?
Yeah. What we're doing is we have a transport of a lot of the senior citizens in town to medical appointments, doctors' appointments, and go shopping for them when they can't get out. My father started a program years ago that anyone in town, a senior citizen, got twenty-five percent off of a local ride, and we still honor that. We're open twenty-four hours, seven days a week. There's a live dispatcher that'll answer the calls versus people that are on answering machines or out-of-town cars. We had a tough go with the recession. We had a cut down, and then the COVID really killed us very slow, and the last one of all, I'm not going to make a big issue out of it, is Uber. They've taken quite a bit of work, you know, every town, not just Burlington, and it's kind of tough, but we have some cars that we do some special needs children with contracts and along with the senior citizens that keep us pretty busy.
Okay. Great. Board members. Nick?
I don't think I have any questions.
No questions. Michael?
No question.
Jimmy?
No questions.
Sarah?
I just had a question about the software that we're, or the website that we're using to look at all of the documents that you provide for us, and just wondering from a small business perspective, if it was a user-friendly interface for you to upload all of those documents and...
Well, we've been doing them for years, putting the permits in, and I waited till the last minute figure, and I could just, I didn't really look that you have a new system and the computer, and the girl was really helpful in the selectmen's office. We finally got everything done properly.
From, well, from my perspective, it was easy for me to go in and view, but I was wondering from your perspective if that was an easy process to go through with the help of our staff. But good to hear that you were able to get that done.
Thank you.
No other questions?
No other questions? Okay. No other questions, I'll need a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the new taxi livery license for Brentwood Livery, one sixty-nine Bethune Street.
Motion by Jim, second by...
Second.
Sarah. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, against? Five zero zero in favor. Congratulations, good luck.
You did very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving right along, eighty-nine Disability Access Commission funds. Mr. Hanifin, how are you, sir?
Good evening, everybody. There's two items that we have to bring before you today, but I have here with me Jack Kuna. John Kuna, sorry, who was just elected by the Disability Access Commission as our new chairman. So if you don't know John, he has been in town for a very long time and holds the distinct pleasure of being the commander of every veteran service organization other than the Marine Corps League, because he's in the Army. But John has dedicated his life to this community. A couple of years ago, him and his wife joined the Disability Access Commission, and within two years now he's the chairman, so. John is a very shy guy, and he's kind of upset that I put him up here right now, but yeah, I just wanted to introduce him in that regard.
Is that why he's red? Is that why, is that why you're red?
Oh, it's hot in here.
So the first thing to bring before you is something that you have all seen for many years. It is to fund the AutoMark machine, which is the disability voting system that we use in the town. We have multiple elections per year, and the AutoMark machine, when we have a federal or state election, is paid for by the federal or state government. But when we have a town election, the town is on the hook for that AutoMark machine. And it's roughly about eighteen hundred dollars per election that we run the AutoMark machine. And Amy, the town clerk, came to us a number of years ago, meaning the Disability Access Commission, seeing if we were willing to help supplement the program. And we've been doing that for a number of years. We've been doing it in a three-year contract, and that latest contract was up in two thousand and twenty-three. So we're coming to you to use the Handicap Parking Fine Fund money to fund the AutoMark machine for the years of two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five, and two thousand and twenty-six, which is roughly a little less than six thousand dollars, but you know, we're putting that buffer in there just in case there is additional cost per year. As of right now, the cost for the AutoMark machine is seventeen hundred and eighteen dollars per election.
Sarah?
No comments.
Mike?
No, no comments, no issue with this?
Nick?
No. This is...
No issue with this, but I think it's a great idea. It's great how you find a way of using the revenue raised from the handicap parking fines to make lives better for residents in town. So I think it's an awesome idea.
Thank you. Lynn, we're going to vote on these separately or together?
I think it's up to us.
I think, I think there are two separate issues, so...
Okay. All right, so we'll vote on this issue first. I have a motion for the AutoMark Voters Assistant Terminal.
I'll make a motion to approve using the Handicap Parking Fine Funds to allow the DAC to fund the AutoMark voting machine for the years two thousand and twenty-four to two thousand and twenty-six.
Second.
Sarah, got it?
Motion made in the second. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Five zero zero.
Thank you. The second thing that we're here for is, and just to give you a little bit of history, the Handicap Parking Fine Fund was created in nineteen ninety-one, when the Disability Access Commission was created. Previous to that, it was approved by the Select Board and the Bylaws Committee in June of nineteen seventy-eight that they would adopt. It is Chapter Forty, Section Twenty-two A, which is the parking meter fee exemption from fees for disability veterans and handicap persons, and it outlines the amount of money that a municipality or city can charge for a handicap parking fine fund. In nineteen seventy-eight, the town voted to set that fund at a hundred dollars. It was increased to two hundred dollars back in nineteen eighty-eight, ten years later, and that fee schedule has not changed since then. Under Section Twenty-two A, and I will read it for you, it says, "Parking spaces designated as restricted under this paragraph shall identify by the use of above-grade signs with white lettering against blue background and shall appear as handicap parking, special plate required. Unauthorized vehicles may be removed at the owner's expense." And then it says here in regards to the schedule of how much you can fine. "Any such ordinance by law, order, rule, or regulation promulgated pursuant to this paragraph shall contain a penalty of not less than a hundred dollars nor more than three hundred, and shall provide for the removal of the vehicle in accordance with Section Twenty-two D." The Disability Access Commission has been mulling this over for a number of years in regards to the fact that we haven't had an increase in the handicap parking fines since nineteen eighty-eight. I did some research, and there are a number of local communities that are charging three hundred dollars for the handicap parking fine. hundred dollars for the handicap parking fine. Town of Danvers, Lowell, Newburyport, Peabody, Medford, Saga, Shrewsbury, Wareham, Middleborough, there's a bunch of them. And there's actually some House legislation right now under Number Thirty-three, Ninety-three to increase that from three hundred to four hundred and fifty. We're not trying to get greedy here. We just think that it is about time that the town allows the handicap parking fine to increase from two hundred to three hundred dollars. One of the reasons why the Disability Access Commission has held off for the last couple of years in increasing this is because we just paid a significant amount of money to produce tickets that state handicap parking fine fund fee, or handicap parking fee at two hundred dollars. So there's a few things that would need to happen at this point beyond your approval, is that we would, it would need to go in front of the Bylaw Committee as well to approve that. And then the Disability Access Commission would help fund to purchase new tickets for the police department that would state three hundred dollars on there. But we're coming to you to seek approval to start that process.
Okay. Thank you. Paul, anything to add?
I have nothing to add, Mr. Chairman, and I just want to thank the members of the Commission for all the great work that they do for the town. And I think this is, I think the board should look to approve this. Clearly, it's a, it's a serious infraction for someone to park it in one of these spots. And, you know, hopefully a larger amount would be more of a deterrent, because there's surprisingly a lot of people that still do it.
Thank you. Jim?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I highly support this. I know there's been a problem with food delivery drivers, rideshare operators abusing handicap parking spots. I'm a hundred percent in favor of this.
Sarah?
I agree. I'm a hundred percent in favor of this, and I'm in favor of whatever articles at the state that would raise it even higher, honestly. Three hundred doesn't seem like enough, so, and I also did the same research, looking at other towns around that are at the three hundred mark. And yeah, I think I agree with it. Thank you for everything you do.
Nick?
This is a huge pet peeve of mine. It drives me up a wall that people think that they are so entitled that they can pop into a handicap spot just for a quote, "second," to do something that they don't need to do when people who are not as able-bodied need those spaces. I agree with Sarah. I would hike this to four fifty in a heartbeat. You know, and the fact that we use these funds to put back into the town to help folks, you know, I mean, I don't think it's going to deter anybody, but I think that those extra dollars will go to the right place. So you have my vote.
Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I'm in agreeance with my fellow board members, the liaison to the Disability Access Commission, and they do great work. And after thirty-six years, I think we're due for a raise in these fines, so I'm all in favor of this. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. So I'm definitely in favor of this. There's no question in my mind. My question is going to be, can you make the books at four fifty, so as soon as it goes to four fifty, we can already have them? Because it's like everybody else. Listen, there's no reason for you to park there. There's nothing wrong with you. So as soon as you come here with the four fifty, make the books to four fifty, cross, make a three in there, whatever you're going to do. So I'm in favor of this without question, no question about it in my mind. I drove my mother and father around for a year with the handicap spot, and I parked someplace else just to drop them off. So there's no reason, absolutely in favor of this. And I need a motion at this point.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion when we approve the DAC's request to increase the handicap parking fine in accordance with Matt General Law, Chapter Forty, Section Twenty-two A, from two hundred dollars to three hundred dollars.
Second. Motion made in the second. And all is favor? Aye. Opposed, staying, five, zero, zero.
Thank you, I appreciate it. And I just wanted to say that as the Disability Access Commission Coordinator, I really appreciate Mike's work on the board, as well as Burlington Police Departments. Right after COVID, our numbers were dwindling fast, and we were thinking, hey, maybe people actually got the point and, you know, stopped parking in handicap parking spots. We went from writing twenty-one tickets a year to now we're writing twenty-one tickets a month and even more. So the police department is doing a fantastic job, and our Handicap Parking Fine Fund is as healthy as it's ever been. So I just want to thank the police department.
We'd like to thank them for parking there.
Well, I'd like to thank the police department for going out there and writing the tickets, so...
Probably not the right thing to say, but you guys know me.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Nice to meet you, Mr. Kuna. Okay, moving right along, we have citizens' time. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak? Mr. Strahan, come on up. Just sign your name and introduce yourself. I don't think you have to put on formal selectmen, but you can put on Mrs. Strahan.
My name's Howie Strahan, Ninety-six Mall Road. I'm here to ask the board for reconsideration on a vote that you folks have taken.
Howie, can I interrupt you for one second? Could you just bring that microphone in a little bit to you?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. I'm asking to, for you folks to have a reconsideration on a vote that you took, I understand, a while ago. And it has to do with displaying artwork on the common, on the town common. I wanted to say out front that I am not against any artwork at all being displayed in town, as long as it's obviously tasteful, but not on the town common. Now, my reasons for that is that the town common didn't always look like it looks today. Back in the fifties and the sixties, there was a baseball field on the common, located right in front of where the Union School is. And also, when carnivals came into town, the carnivals were on the common. And then at some point, and I don't know exactly when, I assume it was the Board of Selectmen at the time, along with probably the Recreation Department, what they did is they decided to beautify the common. And, hang on, this is the first time I've used my phone for notes. And through the years, the money and the work that went into the town common is the way it looks today. And I feel that in this case, allowing artwork to be displayed on the town common will invite other organizations to want to do the same thing. And they may make requests, and the unknown is, we don't know yet at some point what the request would be made. But I feel that if we allow one group to be on the common, it's going to make it very difficult for this board or future boards to have others be treated the same way. For these reasons, I'm requesting that you reconsider your vote for the town common beautification as it looks today. There are other fields available for this and are other areas, and just some of them are the TW, TRW field on the Mall Road, Blanchard Road, where Cummings Park is, which I think is a real nice spot. And that's located between the parking lot and the water tower that's there. Simons Park, the former Center School, and the road leading into the high school, just to name a few. So I know you won't do this tonight, but I would like you to think about it, and then at another meeting, you could have a public meeting concerning your vote and reconsideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Howie. Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to speak on citizens' time? Yes.
Good evening. I'm Myrna, I think I am. I'm Myrna Saltman, town meeting member from Precinct Two. And I'm here to support my friend, Pat Vaughn, who is seated back there. I'm her mouthpiece, for her proposals to try and clean up the litter that's here all over town. And I believe she spoke to each of you individually. I sent you a list of her suggestions, but the reason I am... Excuse me one moment. I'm going to take a drink of water. Town water. The reason that I'm appearing before you is so that everyone in town can hear what her great ideas are, and hopefully we'll all get together and help pick up the litter that is all around. We all see it. So if I may just read the six proposals that she has suggested, and leave it then up to the board how it will implement it, them, hopefully. First, she wants a change written citation for littering to one and a half, one to two hours of community service, either picking up the litter or an actual fine. Pat would request coaches and gym teachers to ensure that all participants leave a clean field when done and educate students to take pride in clean and safe parks. There are plenty of barrels at Marshall Simons Middle School, but nobody seems to use them. She has picked that field up three times over the past couple of months. Number three, to hand out some fluorescent T-shirts with big black lettering, "Don't Trash Mass." Number four, to hand out some fluorescent trash bags with the same logo. Number five, install some public trash receptacles strategically located near every trashy area that gets, that get emptied regularly. Number six, have a telephone number published that citizens can report big items that have been dumped, so DPW can remove them. And lastly, number seven, a campaign for all residents to pick up one piece of trash a day. DPW should not get stuck with the mess. We all need to participate and do better. Set the expectations and enforce them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank her.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else in the audience for citizens' time? Is there anybody online? No? Don't see anybody? Okay. Okay, so we've got to move along, and now we have a public hearing. Flammable licenses, three, Burlington Woods. So who's here for that?
They're all online.
Oh, they're all online?
The ARUP.
Okay. Hi, everybody.
Great.
So we have to open the public hearing first. So somebody want to give me a motion on opening the public hearing?
Yeah, the way it was written.
What's that?
It's not technically, you're not, you can just open it. You need them to accept it the way it was written.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion when we accept the public process written.
Thank you. Second.
Second.
In favor of it being written that way? Yep, okay.
Aye.
All right. So now, discussion. Who's up for that?
Whoever, yeah, that wants to talk.
Who's online there?
Lynn, we have to vote, open the public hearing or...
We have to roll call vote for that, or just a vote?
No.
Just a vote?
But any one of them, whoever wants to take it can talk about it.
Okay. Did I do it correctly? It's a public hearing, open.
Yes. Open and accept it, yes.
Go ahead.
Hello, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yep.
And see me? I hope. I can't see myself, so. Thank you all for having us this evening. My name is Brian Tamura. I'm the direct manager of Three Burlington Woods Drive, and I'm representing the owners of the building, GI Partners. Just a really brief history of the building. It was originally constructed in the nineteen eighties and then sold from MG Burlington to GI ETS Burlington in February of 2022. Lab conversion plans began soon thereafter, with the permit issued in March of 2023, at which point we obtained ARUP services to support our flammable license application. Victoria?
Sure. And I'm just going to go over really quickly what we submitted. This is a license application to store and hold flammable liquids greater than seven hundred and ninety-three gallons on the property. As Brian mentioned, this will be a spec lab building for laboratory tenants, so we're just planning for the storage of solvents in greater than seven hundred and ninety-three gallons, which requires us to apply for a license through the town. The application includes the license form, which has been reviewed with Captain Hanifin at the fire department. It includes a four-fourteen report, which basically just outlines all of the various safeguards that are included in the building and then the butters list.
Okay. Go to comments from the board. We'll start with Michael. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can you tell us a little bit of what your company does and what, a little bit about GEI ETS?
Well, the ownership entity is a real estate company, so that's why they invested in the building and then converted it to lab.
Okay. And have you been before the Board of Health with this application yet?
For the specific flammable license application, we have not, no. We don't typically, we're not typically required to go before the Board of Health.
By the common. They sign off, they come to us. Fire Department, yeah.
That's what I had. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Jim?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Would it be used by one company, or is this for several companies within that one building?
It would be a multi-tenant building, so several companies within the same building.
That's the only question I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Sarah?
I guess I have a follow-up question to that, because I feel supremely unqualified to look at this and understand what it is. So I reached out to Captain Hanifin, seeing that he signed off on it, just to see if he had any questions or concerns. He obviously looked all over. He says he has no concerns. He said, even with this license being in place, any other tenant of this building wishing to store flammables will still be required to apply for a permit through the fire department, which would give him an opportunity to oversee what is being stored and how it is used. So I don't know if that means it's a tenant-by-tenant basis, or if this is for the whole building. I guess that's my confusion.
Sure. Yeah, so this application for the license would be for the entire parcel. So it would be for the whole building. Each tenant will be required to apply for a permit directly through the fire department, which would be tenant-by-tenant. So it's kind of all under this umbrella license for the building.
Got it. Okay.
Thank you. And you did say that a butters have been notified? Is that correct? I know it's...
I know it's, you know, all commercial space are...
There's no residents that I could see over there, but all that's been taken care of?
Yes.
Okay.
We actually got them back. They come back to us.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you. That's all I had. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Nick?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think most of my questions at this point have been answered by the rest of the board. Just so I'm clear, though, this is for flammable liquids only, correct? No gases or anything else?
Correct.
Okay. All right. I'd love to see if anybody has a public comment, you know, has a comment in regards to the public hearing, but at this time I have no further questions.
Okay. All my questions have been answered, so I'm going to go directly to public comment. Does anybody in the audience or anybody online have any comments about this? I know we do have the fire chief here tonight, but he seems to think everything's good, right? Okay, thank you. Nobody? I still see any hands up and... Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion when we close the public hearing?
Second.
Motion made in the second. We're going to close the public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, staying against? Public hearing is now closed. I'll need a motion to approve at this point. Mr. Sagorino, any comments on this?
I have nothing further to add. Mr. Chairman, I think you'll be seeing more of these applications as life sciences companies continue to move to town.
Thank you. And Paul, before we move along, I'm going to apologize right now, because there's been a few times I forgot you're up there and not over there, and if you're not over there, I kind of, kind of lost you for a minute, so I apologize if I didn't ask at the right time at the right place. So thank you.
You're wrong at all.
So at this point, I'll need a motion to approve.
Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve a flammable license for GTI ETS Burlington at Three Burlington Woods Drive, parcel ID forty-one dash nine-eight dash five.
Second.
Second.
Seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, staying, five, zero, zero. Okay, you're all set.
Good luck. Good luck.
Thank you guys so much. You appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, discussion, approval. Pigs on Parade. I saw one walk in. Oh, there it is. I saw it come in. Here we go. Barbara, stand if you could just introduce yourself to everybody.
Hello, I'm Barbara Leroux. I'm the current chair of the Sculpture Park Committee, and with me is John Sacks, who is the founder of the Sculpture Park. Thank you for seeing us tonight. This is my friend. I haven't named him because I'm afraid I'll get too attached, because someone else is going to be taking him home. So he's living in my living room for a very short period of time. I wanted to give you all a very quick update on the Pigs on Parade project, and then I have a very simple request in terms of the update. The pigs have all been delivered to Burlington. About half of them have already gone to their sponsor companies and are being painted. The others are going to be picked up within the next few days or week to go to their artists and be painted. We have met with the recreation department and come up with a plan of where they'll be located on the common, so everything is moving forward very smoothly. My request tonight is extremely simple. I neglected, when I first came before you, to ask for permission. I have permission for the actual event, when we have the unveiling on June 22nd, but I neglected to ask for a rain date. So that's why I'm here tonight, to see if we can have a rain date for the following day, Sunday, June 23rd, for the same time, approximately 10:00 AM to 12:00 PM. And that's all I'm asking for tonight.
Okay. Discussion. Sarah?
Just one question, Barbara. How are you all doing on the fundraising efforts?
We are doing well. It's tough. It's tough out there, but I feel pretty confident that we're gonna have 10 big pigs and six little pigs on the common by the end of June. We're still working on placing the last few.
No other questions?
No questions.
No questions. Thank you.
The pigs are much cuter in person.
This is the baby.
No questions. Jim?
No questions, but I'm not sure if you just wanna remind everybody to, in that very productive meeting with rec. department and DPW, it was decided that when everything would be removed prior to celebrate Burlington, everybody was on board. Not celebrate, September 7th, I'm sorry.
We're actually going to s-
Truck Day, it was Truck Day.
Right, but we're gonna stick with the original date that you already approved, August 31st.
I know, last time we discussed the September 7th.
We talked about it, but there were actually some logistical problems on my end about removing them on the 7th, so we decided to just stick with the August 31st date.
Okay.
Thank you, Jim, though. I didn't have a chance to tell you that.
Okay. So what you're asking for is just a rain date tonight?
Yes.
That's all you're asking for?
That's all I'm asking for, for the Pigs on Parade. I actually, Lynn reminded me I have a separate thing I need to ask you about, but I have not, had nothing to do with the Pigs on Parade.
Okay.
Talk about taking the pigs out on a different date?
No. That's what Jim was saying. I'm gonna stick with August 31st.
Okay.
Sorry.
Okay. So we need a motion for the rain date, please.
Chairman, I'll make a motion for the, to approve the rain date as requested.
Okay.
Second.
Motion made in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Staying? Okay, rain date's all set.
So the other very minor matter that I wanted to bring to your attention is, I also have permission for a different program happening at the Sculpture Park, May 11th, which is this Saturday. The School of Rock is coming. They're bringing their kids and are performing, and they're gonna do a drum circle and have instruments there for kids to try out. Originally, that event was approved for 1:00 PM to 3:00 PM. School of Rock has asked if we could change that to 2:00 PM to 4:00 PM, and so I said I would ask you. It's up to you.
Me personally?
The five of you.
No. Gentlemen, ladies, anything? Make a motion on that?
Because it's not on the agenda, can we technically vote on it?
It's not, but it was emailed, and I've only gotten two responses. She would like three, so she could move forward.
Okay.
So I guess someone could just respond, and I can let Barbara know tonight or tomorrow.
I'm fine with it. I'm fine with it also.
Okay.
So I have, I have a question that probably doesn't pertain to this, but are we making out with the signs? What's going on with that?
I have resubmitted to the Board of Appeals. I have yet to hear from them when I'm going to be scheduled to appear before them again. I expect that we'll probably be at their next meeting, which is not tomorrow night. I don't know when exactly it will be. And that's all I can really tell you right now. It's up to the Board of Appeals.
Okay. So before I ask, Mr. Sagarino, are we in charge of the common for signs, or is the rec. department in charge? Or who's, who's authorized to approve signs on the common? I guess that's what I'm asking.
Mr. Chairman, we're gonna review the zoning bylaw, and these need to be approved by the building inspector. He doesn't have, we don't have the provisions in the zoning bylaw to allow for them, so thus, he forwarded the committee on to the Board of Appeals.
Okay. So did we get a recommendation from the?
Building inspector?
He denied their application to put the signs on the common, as is the procedure.
And he said at that time?
They go to the zoning board?
Okay.
That's correct.
I don't know if I can do this. Lynn, tell me if I'm right or wrong, but our zoning board chairman is in the back of the room. Can we ask him when they're, when they're gonna be on the agenda, just so we can get all this? Because it's been going back and forth with different groups, so can I ask him now, or is that something I can't do as far as technically with all the stuff that, in today's world, that I can't do?
I think he can tell us the meeting. He can't come up and like have a whole discussion on it.
No, 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 he can't have a full discussion, but I could ask him.
But yeah, I think he could give us the meeting, for sure.
Jeff, would you like to come down for a second and just tell us when the meeting's gonna be, so they can, we can get all this out in the public air and just realize what's going on?
Hi, good evening. So from my understanding, it's gonna be scheduled for our first meeting in June, June 4th.
Okay.
By the submission deadline.
Okay.
May I ask you a question? Is there any way we can do it before that? Because I need to order the signs before June 4th, so that they can be installed on June 21st.
We have to advertise a certain period of time. We have to go by the legal ways of doing that. I can't give you something earlier.
Okay, that's a discussion that we're not gonna get into tonight. All right, that's between, that's between your Pigs on Parade and his board. That's got nothing to pertain with us, so I don't wanna, I don't wanna cause any, any issues. So you gotta call, text him, email him, whatever it's gonna be.
I'm sure we can work it out.
See if you guys can work that out. All right, but right now, Ted, I'm glad you heard that now, instead of, you know, some other time, so maybe you can work it out in between then, but June 4th is what it's scheduled for. So.
A question, if I may. I guess, Paul, compared to another event that might run a day or a weekend, that would bring signs and have them at the event, that we would approve, how, like, is this only different because of the time, like, the length of what's occurring?
I think it's due to the advertising nature. Nick, they're basically signs to advertise the businesses that are sponsoring the pigs, as opposed to, with a, with an event on the common, there are some decorations typically related to the event, but not necessarily what I guess we would call advertising signs.
Okay. So moving on, we've done our thing with this. That's a discussion that you two need to have.
Okay.
We've approved the, we've approved the rain date, and Mr. Priest already kinda said, yeah, that's a good idea, two to four. So you are all set.
Okay, thank you very much.
Everything else goes to his board now.
Thank you very much.
Before we get to any discussion that we don't need.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Approval. May 2024 warrant articles. Mr. Dinesio?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have some warrant articles tonight, you know, a couple handfuls of them, and the first two are gonna be presented by our planning director, who's online. There's Liz. She's gonna be doing article 34 and 35, that she would like the, to review with the board, and have the board take a position.
Yes.
So, thank you for your time, everyone. I wanted to do a quick update on kind of what I'm looking to do for, for town meeting, and I'm gonna zoom this in. So this is basically the backup for the zoning bylaw and parking and landscaping modernization articles. So this was in the backup, and there are kind of a couple of main points to this. So the first point is that we are reformatting minimum and part maximum parking requirements, so that they're easier to use. So right now, you can see that the requirements for the number of parking spaces that a property owner needs to have at their establishment is extremely verbose, and not very efficient when you're trying to figure out, well, how many parking spaces do I need? You need to, you know, do a lot of math. So, you know, we are taking what is currently in kind of paragraph format and putting it into a table, which is much easier to read and much easier to understand. So that's kind of the first part of this. We're also allowing more flexibility for property owners and development, developers to meet their parking requirements. So one of the things that we're doing as part of this is, you know, if a property or development is within 10% plus or minus of their parking requirements, they can request a waiver from the planning board on that. And so that's currently not allowed, so that's a, that's a good, a good economic development tool. If they want to go beyond that 10%, they can also do that through a special permit process. So if they choose to do that, then they need to, you know, show the board that they, you know, based on the following things, that they can, that the amount of parking that is available will suit the needs of the businesses. So you have to, you know, show, either show you have off-site parking, that there is shared parking demand, you know, all these things. If there's a car share program, if you're close to public transit. So all of these things, if you can basically create, if you can make a, make the point to the planning board that you think it will work, and the planning board agrees based upon these things, then you can, you can meet the demand that way. We're adding basic development and landscaping standards. This is a big thing that the board talks about with developers, is to kind of elevate the design. And so one of the ways they try to do that, because if you're elevating design, you're increasing property values for yourself, but everyone around you, right? So, you know, they talk a lot about landscaping. We're talking about structured parking as well. So if you're ever gonna build a parking garage, you need to have basic, you know, design standards, you know, surface parking lots. So if you're increased, if you're a new development, or you're increasing your parking by more than 50%, because, you know, you're doubling the size of your building, you know, you need to meet these basic parking design standards. It's, you know, again, elevate, elevate the design. And I know Melissa Tentaklas has been talking a lot about this in the Mall Road, but I think it can really, it should apply to everywhere in Burlington. And, you know, 50% or more, that's, that's a pretty high threshold. So, you know, I didn't, this shouldn't be too burdensome on our smaller businesses. And then the last thing again is landscaping. So parking lot landscaping, we're adding requirements to that. So I'm sure you guys are all aware, in the summertime, when you drive from Town Hall or the common down to Mall Road, the temperature goes through the roof. And one of the ways that we're trying to combat that is really starting to require shade trees and parking lot landscaping, so that we can try to reduce that heat island effect. And those are kind of the major points on this. I don't wanna go into too much detail, but I don't know if, Melissa, if you have anything that you wanna add to this. We've kind of been collaborating on it a lot, which has been amazing. And, you know, I think it's been good. So Melissa, I don't know if you had, I wanted to give you a chance to add anything quickly. You're muted, Melissa.
She should be able to.
She doesn't have, she doesn't have a.
Request to unmute people.
She doesn't even have a microphone on her.
Oh, your microphone isn't working, Melissa. I'm sorry.
There you go.
I?
It's set.
I did. Twice. Is it, and Melissa, is it asking you to unrequest to unmute?
Four years, we still can't get this right.
No, we can't get it. No, not working. Sorry, sorry, Melissa. I will move on to the next one, and if she logs back in again, maybe, and we can talk about it. And so the next thing I'm gonna talk about is our use, our modernizing our use table, and this should say article 34 instead of 33. Don't worry, it's, it's in the warrant. So the whole point of this is to, again, these are both kind of economic development warrant articles, is to modernize our use table. And so, you know, why are we, you know, so what is the purpose of the amendment? So basically, it's to kind of streamline, remove obsolete uses, and add modern uses to our use table, to make it more user-friendly. So our use table, for those of you that don't live in the world of planning, it's a table in the zoning bylaw that has, again, all of these types of uses, and then to the right of it, it's all of, it's a table of all of our zoning districts. So it's basically what you're allowed to do, where in the town. So, you know, you're not allowed to open up, you know, you're not allowed to have a single-family house in the general business district, you know, and so things like that. So it shows you that. So we are basically updating that and modernizing it for, for, to, you know, keep our tax base robust. So what changes? So we're removing small, old uses, and we're either, you know, removing the uses, or we are kind of categorizing them a little bit differently. So travel agencies, you know, there are still travel agents out there, and they have offices, but that would be considered, you know, a professional service type of business. And, you know, people who are doing nails and hair, that's a personal service business. So we're not necessarily eliminating all of these things, but we are kind of tidying it up, if that makes sense. So we're adding all of these cool, modern uses. You know, we are, you know, we're looking to attract new businesses, keep all of our existing businesses really robust in the marketplace. You know, office tenancy is down, and so, you know, we need to, we need to provide, you know, different options for the business community to keep it vibrant. So just having these things in our use table, and, you know, when somebody is Googling, you know, I wanna be able to do a public market, public market, you know, Massachusetts, you know, Burlington zoning bylaw would show up. So these types of things are kind of just allowing new uses, and we think things that are kind of cool and new, so public markets, brewery, distillery, cider winery is gonna be allowed, which I think is a cool use that brings people together. It's really great for place-making, creative workspace, you know, and just things that we think are gonna be helpful for the, for the business community. We're also doing some other cleanup, so I did say that, you know, we're consolidating other uses. So we have all of these public facilities. So public, basically, in the bylaw means owned and operated by the town of Burlington. So we consolidated these, all of these into one thing. So just basic, basic housekeeping things. And we basically took a lot of these verbose things. So the existing use, educational use for profit, it's a paragraph. So we took this paragraph, put it in the definition section of the bylaw, and we just have educational use for profit, or public transportation facility. And then, you know, if you're looking for deeper information about it, you go to the, to the definition section. And so we are still moving forward with our submission to town meeting, and I think, wanted to keep it kind of brief. So if anybody has any questions, I'm open to, to that, or, you know, just looking for, you know, opinions, thoughts, questions.
Any questions for the board?
Everyone checking in?
Hi.
Yep.
Got a comment?
Comment.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Liz. I really like the modernization of the use table. I know those are tough to read, and anything we can do to get more categories and more dynamic businesses to town, and more interesting things that come help our town, not, not only both for the residents, but for our economy, I think is a great thing. So definitely in favor of all of that, and thank you for all the work you've done on it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Liz. I agree with Mike. I have no issues and appreciate all the work you've put into the modernization of the definitions and use tables. I think all of that makes sense. I do have some questions on the parking and landscaping modernization, one being the heat island effect. And how is that measured other than, you know, the feel of moving from one part of town to another? Has there ever been a true, I don't know, scientific measurement of that? And how does it compare to neighboring communities?
Yeah. So, and so, this is, so I would ask the marketing commission because they know where to find all of this stuff online, but there are heat maps. So, you know, with aerial photography and through satellite imagery, you can see what the ground temperature is. And you can visualize all of that. And so, just basic, you know, we can tell, you know, working in Burlington, living in Burlington, you can totally tell. But there is data to back that up. And, you know, I can bring that up and do a little bit more research on it and have a visualization. But there, you know, there are websites out there. I don't have them off the top of my head that will show that.
That will likely come up at town meeting.
My other question, if I can continue, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
As we're thinking about, you know, bringing in new businesses and expanding and making things better for the businesses that we have now, this is a lot of language. Does this simplify things, benefit the business community, or does this overcomplicate things?
So, excellent question and something I probably should have mentioned earlier. So, I've been working on this since November. And it's been, and I've also been getting a lot of contact with the Chamber of Commerce and a lot of business leaders. And they've been working with me collaboratively on both of these articles. And it's been a really helpful back and forth. And they've given me input and, you know, it's, you know, some of their stuff I took, some of it I didn't for various reasons. But I can say that the Chamber of Commerce has, and I have been going back and forth. And I think we've come to a spot where I think we're both comfortable. I'm not going to say that they vote officially voted on it or anything. But, you know, I've been working with them and, you know, I think that they, from what I understand, they're in support, but I don't think it's an official vote at this point. But I guess that's the short answer.
No, yeah, I appreciate...
I understand the reasoning behind all of this. I just want to make sure that we're keeping in mind that we are in tenuous ground with our commercial and business community. And anything that makes things cumbersome, overcomplicated, I think we should think about very carefully. So, that's all I say.
For you, Mr. Chair, I, you know, one of the whole point of this, what, how this came about was Melissa working with her consultants for the Mall Road rezoning. You know, he came up with these Mall Road zoning chapters. And I saw them and I said, hey, this is so much easier to read and makes so much more sense. These uses are great. This is so much simpler. You know, why don't we adopt these as part of the regular general bylaw? You know, I can cut stuff out that isn't, that isn't really relevant. And I think that it's a good format. So, a lot of this is simplifying what we already have. So, I just want to say that for the record.
Thank you, Chairman.
Sure. Go ahead.
So, yeah, the Chamber and the Government Affairs Committee has reviewed this. They've provided input. We've been, you know, through, some of this has been through direct communication with property owners and businesses throughout the town. As Liz said, this is to facilitate, you know, kind of an update, the parking requirement as well as the uses. And they're both intended to help tenant space at the end of the day. It really does give people more options. That said, I think it also keeps in mind the community's benefit for the development we want to see. So, it's not that it's removing all kind of regulations around this at all, but it's really also maintaining things that are important to the community that we've heard through the outreach process for not only Mall Road but MBTA about everything from, you know, the elevated design, which is in our master plan, to pieces about, you know, concern about flooding and heat island effects associated with climate change. And these kind of elements also support that with regard to the design pieces for the parking standards. So, I think that's also what we're trying to balance. And I just want the board to, you know, kind of understand that this is not exclusively a business community, you know, bylaw, nor is it just, you know, one-sided without giving feasibility to development and future development also. So...
Thank you.
Thanks, Chairman. Couple of questions.
My first is, Liz, I guess, when I think about this, as great as it is, it truly is, I appreciate all the work that, you know, has gone into this. What could be the potential effects for small business property owners, like where their parking size is already drastically low? You know, like if they go for a redesign of their lot and they hit that amount, you know, what's that going to do to them?
So, one of the things that we made sure, we made sure that any type of threshold kind of was more geared towards if you're completely redeveloping or if you are at doubling the size of your building essentially. And if you're doubling the size of your building and you don't have enough parking, you shouldn't be doubling the size of your building to begin with. So, and the other thing, so that's that. The other thing is that this gives you flexibility. So, now, if you're a smaller business and you're, you know, it's a pre-existing business, it's been there forever, you've only had this many spaces, you want to add a new use, you know, you can get a waiver from the planning board if you provide, you know, you show that there's off-site parking, if there's a bus available, if you, you know, can show that whatever, if you're like a mixed-use plaza, if there's, you know, a dinner restaurant and a breakfast restaurant and the two uses aren't going to clash as regards to parking, you know, you can do all of those things. So, I think that it was not, you know, it should not affect smaller businesses at all. It should be something that allows them greater flexibility.
Okay. And then...
And also to add to that, you provide the waiver. So, there is a waiver in case you cannot meet the requirements. You can request a waiver from the planning board.
Right. Okay. And then, my second question is just, I was curious, as you've been shopping this around to, you know, I assume planning board...
And, you know, bylaw review and, you know, what have been the top concerns that you've heard, if any?
So, I've had this in front of the land use committee since November. And I haven't really heard any concerns until pretty recently. And the, the ZBRC, so the zoning bylaw review committee, they did give me some, you know, things that, you know, some language tweaks and that type of thing, as is their purview. I did not receive those until before, after I needed to get everything into Lynn. So, those are all things that are on my docket for September to, you know, take those into consideration and do kind of a housekeeping amendment. These are, this is, these are huge documents that I've been working with. And so, you know, I, you know, we're going to be working on them until they're perfect. So, that's kind of where I am at. What else? I think that's it.
Okay. Honestly, I was just curious. I mean, you know, from my seat, I think this is a great idea. I'm just curious of people who are...
Yeah. So, I think I will be going to ZBRC on Wednesday night. That's when they're having their meeting. I think it's at six-thirty.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Chairman.
Jim?
I have nothing, Mr. Chairman.
You have nothing?
I think it's a great idea.
All right. So, I have nothing. Want to approve these one by one? Right? So, I'll need a motion on the NED.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve Articles thirty-four and thirty-five as presented, or do those have to be settled? All right. Thirty-four, thirty-five as presented.
Second.
Motion made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose staying five zero zero. Thank you.
Thank you guys so much. I really appreciate it.
All right. Have a good night.
Thank you.
I will be ready.
Next up is...
Mr. Chairman, before we move on, I just want to echo something that the planning director, but Liz was said in the beginning about how great it was to be doing this in collaboration with the Economic Development Department and with Melissa specifically. We all talk about how vital that is going forward to the future of the town. So, it's, I'm glad that was being acknowledged, that there's a lot of collaboration going on there. It's great.
Excellent. Thank you.
So, our next warrant articles, we have four specifically for the fire department, one shared with the police and fire. And then, we'll move on to three from the police department after that. But we could have the fire chief come on up.
Absolutely.
So, those articles, as I usually do, I'll try to steal the chief's thunder before he gets up here. So, I want to make him to talk about...
I can walk slower.
Articles seven-one, seven-two, and seven-three. Article seven dash one is the shared article for both public safety departments. This is the final phase of a three-phased, three-phased infrastructure refresh project for all of the radio infrastructure throughout the town for both, for both, for both police and fire. This ask is for nine-hundred-and-fifty-five thousand and has three components to it. It has the radio component for the fire department, the portable radio component for the fire department, the portable radio component for the police department, and then the fire alarm call box for the fire department. That those add up to just under nine-hundred-and-fifty-five thousand dollars. So, that's Article seven dash one. Do you want us to go over them? Give an overview of all of them or just go one by one and you can ask questions?
Well, let's go one by one. Have any questions on this from the board? Any questions at all from anybody on the board on this one article? No? Okay. No questions on that one. Move right along.
Seven dash two is a rescue vehicle for the fire department. And I'll let the chief and maybe selectmen tickets talk more about this.
Yeah. So, this is a rescue UTV. It says ATV, but I've learned it's a UTV because it's larger. It's basically a dual-purpose, actually multi-purpose vehicle. It has a rescue component to it where we can carry a victim out from the depths of, say, the landlocked parcel or the mill pond reservoir, both of which we've had victims that had to be carried out manually. Will it get us directly to the patient? No, but it will get us closer. And, you know, it's quite trying at times to carry people long distances. So, this will help both the patient and hopefully reduce injuries if our guys have to carry someone a long way. It also has a firefighting component to it. We would use it for brush fires, same locations. And it has a tank that it can flow water on its own, but, you know, typically it would flow water and then we'd refill it or we could attach it to a, to one of the fire, larger fire engines for water supply. And it's, you know, focusing on mill pond and the landlocked, but, you know, we've had large brush fires in hard-to-access places such as the high-tension wires. So, it's not just the places that we can think of. If you can think of somewhere that's hard to access, we, it will help us both deliver the services that we need to get victims and to put out a fire more efficiently.
Sure.
Please, Mr. Chairman. I actually floated this idea with Chief Patterson, was the fire chief at the time. And at that time, him and I was sat down, so, well, we could use it for this, we could use it for that. Off the top of my head, landlocked forest, reservoir, Mary Cummings Park, high-tension fields, high-tension lines, athletic fields, particularly during inclement weather. It gives, it gives access to areas where the operators cannot go. It can also be used in events like the Fourth of July parade where roads are shut down or construction sites where roads are shut down or even construction sites themselves. So, if someone gets injured, say, up on Blue Sky Drive where an engine can't access into those huge areas, because of the nature of the construction site, a truck or ambulance can't get up there, where UTV could make a rescue. And again, the benefit of saving us from firefighters from getting injured. So, it's not, this is not like something that we just thought of. It's been something that we're thinking about for years. And now that we have this landlocked, the landlocked forest, we have the reservoir, which gets used quite often, the new Mary Cummings, I don't say new, but newer Mary Cummings Park where we have all those trails, we have no way of getting to someone if they're injured or if there's a fire in there. So, I think we really, really need something like this to give the town, the residents, you know, better protection against fires and injuries.
Okay. Thank you. Questions from the board? Want to start, Mike?
Not a question, a comment. Yeah, I was looking at this article pretty closely and I think it's a great idea. Anything, any tool we can give you to save, you know, get to a tough area or save, you know, minutes or even seconds could be the difference between life and death. I'm surprised we didn't have one already. Like, what would you do? What were you doing for this? Like, just having guys carry guys out of the woods?
Yep.
Yeah. This would be a huge help to the department and a great benefit to the citizens to save someone's life.
Sure.
I agree. Nothing to add.
Can someone remind me what the dollar amount of this was?
Sixty-five.
Sixty-five. Okay.
My turn. Okay. What do you mind? I know it was a UTV, but...
Well, it's, we priced out a Polaris.
Polaris?
Yeah.
Four-wheel drive?
Yep.
Four-wheel drive?
And there, you know, obviously other brands out there.
UTV with the bed in the back?
Yep.
Well, the difference between the UTV and ATV? ATV, you can sit on it, one person. UTV, you can put two people in it. Utility vehicle, automatic vehicle. So, it's a big difference. Rode them for years and they're a blast. Not that you guys are going to have fun on them.
No.
You're not going out there to, you're not going out there to drive around and just have a good time, but I couldn't think of a better idea to use one for. And the sixty-five thousand is well spent because it's going to be, it's going to be lit up, going to be able to carry water out there, you'll be able to get a resident out faster if something happens. And all the areas that you don't, the four-wheel drive will put in places that the guys wouldn't be able to get to.
Search and rescue?
Yep, everything, everything. I just hope that's enough with the light system you're going to need and, you know, going in there at nighttime. I just hope it's enough that it'll light it all up and everything else. There's classes out there for the guys to take so they actually know how to use it the proper way. Because anybody can drive one, it's like a regular car, but you can also flip it over pretty easy too, you know, which this shoulder will tell you all about that. But I'm in favor of it. So, other than that, any other questions or comments on this? No? Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The next two are vehicles also, big but a little bigger. Seven dash three is replacing a fire command car. That was next up on our vehicle replacement, our fleet maintenance schedule for seventy-eight thousand dollars, also coming from the free cash. I don't know if the chief has anything to add. Some pictures in the backup with, I want to show you the rust on them.
Yeah, we've actually, so this will go as a frontline piece for the command officer for the day and the night. And what we do is we take that car and we transition it to the training captain. And right now, the training captain's car is out of service. Last year, they got it to pass inspection by replacing the rocker panels. But even the smallest amount of rust that you can see on the other side is a lot more. And we felt it was just too dangerous for him to be driving. we felt it was just too dangerous for him to be driving, so it's now, it's now parked. He's, he's using a sedan from the police, I think, handed down to the DPW, so, until we can get another vehicle for him.
Any questions on this from the board? Everyone shaking their head, no? Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The next one, even bigger vehicle is a fire engine, next engine to be replaced for one point two million dollars. It's Article twelve, and that will also be from free cash.
Similar, we, you know, put, we'll put this in the frontline, that one will get replaced and, and move back to reserve status. And then in the future, when we go buy another one, that, it will go back to the next step in reserve status and then go away. So the one we're replacing, lots of rust, falling apart, it's old, it's, it's time for it to go, so.
Okay. Fire engine, ready?
I have one quick question. Chief, I know our, our tower, it's like two years out, if I'm not mistaken. Is the lag time, it's more than two years?
We probably aren't getting that for another three years.
So it's gone longer since the last time you and I even talked about it?
Well, it's three to four years for the tower, and then two to three years for...
My question is, does an engine take as long as a tower, or is it shorter?
The engine should be quicker.
That's the, that's the only question I had.
All set? Any others? Nothing?
I have a question, and I think this is probably for John. I know the command car was free cash, you said the fire engine is also going to be out of free cash?
Correct.
Okay. In the warrant, it doesn't look like it, it just, it says appropriate transfer, borrow, or other, so it's unclear that it's coming out of free cash.
So when we create the warrant, we put all of the potential funding sources in there?
Okay.
And then as we go through the process with Ways and Means, we identify what this funding source is, and then at town meeting, when they do their motion, they identify that funding source.
Okay. Thank you.
All set? Okay.
All right, so the next one, also the fire, but I'll take this one. This is a transfer from the receipts reserved for ambulance account to offset ambulance costs in the fire department operating budget for ambulance services. So this is something we'll do annually now. Every year, you may remember when we first started providing ALS services, we created a receipts reserved account in order for us to, when we take in those revenues, to isolate them from the general fund, and then be able to use those revenues to offset the cost increase of providing that service. We've been, we went a few years without transferring anything in, so we could kind of see what the normalized rate was going to be of the revenues that came in each year. We expect that to be between four and five hundred thousand, or at least that's what it has been, and the idea is we're going to use for right now, three hundred and sixty thousand dollars to offset the operating budget, which would leave us a little wiggle room after four or five years to replace an ambulance from that same, from those same revenues. So it's a good sustainable, sustainable model going forward. I expect that this, we'll have this item at every May town meeting for a while, for a long time, maybe forever, but that the amount will go up. So as we start, as the services is costing more, or as revenues go up, we'll probably increase this transfer. But again, it's, it's a, it's sort of a, just a housekeeping thing. When we approved the operating budget for the fire department, it had netted out three hundred and sixty thousand dollars from it. So if this weren't, if this article were to fail at town meeting, we'd be back at September town meeting needing three hundred and sixty thousand dollars more for the fire department.
Okay. Any questions on this one? No, no questions? Okay, so at this point, I'll need a motion to...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
I make a motion we approve Articles seven dash one, seven dash two, seven dash three, and Articles twelve and eighteen as presented.
Motion's been made?
Second.
Seconded? All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed, staying, five zero zero, chief, congratulations.
All right, thank you, everyone.
Thank you. As we wait for the, for the chief to come up for a start, thanks to the fire department, and you're welcome, Assistant Chief, game doesn't start for twenty-five more minutes. So Chief Brown is here to go over the three, the two, one financial article and two zoning articles for the police department. Some of you, this will be your, maybe tenth time seeing this presentation, but we ask for your indulgence to let the chief go through it for those that haven't seen it, get a chance to see it. So with that, I'll turn it over to the chief, he can introduce his friend.
My friend.
My friend.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, with me tonight is Kevin Whittles from Castle Booze Associates. He is our project manager for the feasibility study for the new police station project. So as John's alluded, I know you've probably all sat through this presentation, but hopefully maybe we pick up something new every time we come and do it before a different committee or board. We try to incorporate some of the questions that we've, that we've heard from, from recent comments and provide feedback. So as we go through this, most of it will be familiar, but why is a new station needed? Obviously, the Union School built in eighteen ninety-seven, modified again in nineteen twenty-three, the police station went in there in nineteen ninety-two. And the best way I can put it is that we put a police station into an old school. The design was never something that met with modern efficiencies. We still have some problems in there with safety and security concerns. The layout of the building is, is just fraught with issues. We have hallways that are, you know, much wider than we need, and as a result of the wide hallways, we have office space that's crammed into different parts of the building. And we made a decision probably about ten years ago that we were going to start paring down the money that was going into the building to make the repairs. So the building is, has fallen into disrepair, and the reason for that is, if you look back, town meeting put together a facilities inventory committee back in two thousand and nine, I believe it was, and they published their results in two thousand and ten. And specifically, as it relates to the police station, they noted that the long-term resolution is a complete replacement of the facility in the next ten years. We're obviously beyond that time period. They also noted that a new building should be built specifically for the police. And again, in context, I think what the reference there is, you can't really put a police station into an old school. It just, it really doesn't work. And finally, among other things, they said, because the current station is situated in a central location, the recommendation is to undertake a complete renovation of the existing building when the time comes. I would propose to all of you that the time has come, the time has come past us, and we're here hoping that this, you know, obviously goes through town meeting. So in order to get here, we went back to the town meeting back in September of twenty twenty-two, and town meeting was gracious enough to approve a hundred and fifty thousand dollar feasibility study. Myself and the town administration went through the, the process of choosing the architect. KBA was, was chosen to perform the study, and basically, at the time, they were tasked with, with some deliverables, and the most notable ones that we'll kind of frame around this presentation are, they were to identify whether the current building could be renovated. Second, identify other town-owned sites that could be used as a police station. And this would all be dependent upon the lot size necessary in any town-owned land that was in the center. So when the program comes out, which I'll get to, the ability to put it on town-owned land was very limited because we needed the size and we needed it in the town center. Third, they were to identify whether the current site could be used for new construction if, in fact, renovation was not possible. And then finally, to determine the size of the building and the necessary land acreage that we would need to accommodate this new station. So as we went through the feasibility, the, we worked with KBA. One of the things they did to begin the process was they came in and they identified our staffing needs and a space needs assessment. They worked with myself and the deputy and the police administration to find out how our current operation works. They looked at the size of our station right now in terms of staffing, they looked at the town population, the calls for service, and they basically extrapolated all that out so that they could make a fifty to sixty-year building, in that the design would be efficient and meet twenty-first century needs as we move forward. So when they took all this information into play, they came back with what they call a program or program design, and they determined at that time that we would need a building that's approximately thirty-six thousand five hundred square feet, and that would require about two point seven acres of land. So right there, I know that people have asked, well, you know, you didn't seem to look at a lot of different lots. Well, we were limited by size. So, you know, we took a look at one twenty-five Cambridge Street, there are some wetlands concerns over there, we took a look at one seventy-three Middlesex Turnpike, the water treatment plant, that will be wholly within the flood plain as of next year or this coming year. And we also had on the list Pine Glen, but as we know from the building committee with the schools, Pine Glen was taken off because they're staying with the four elementary school system. So we looked in, in unison with the fact that we could possibly build where we currently are, and that's the plan we're going forward with because KBA was able to determine that, in fact, that would work. But in order for it to work, to get that two point seven acres of land, we would need to rezone the open space out of the Grandview Plan Development District, which are the, the gist of the zoning articles that, that are before you. So again, there was no other town-owned land available, which was the best location for us for response times. It also gives the New England feel and ease of operations. And what KBA has come out with as a preliminary plan, and it's just preliminary, was a hinge design that would allow the best option to give operational efficiency and also give the necessary space to the abutters and use as little of the adjacent land as possible. And I will say that every committee we've gone to, we, we stress that whatever land we don't use, provided the project goes through, we do intend to return back to the Grandview Plan Development District. The new building came in at an estimated cost right now of forty-six million, two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. One question that's come up are state grants. Did we look at state grants? There are no companion state grants like you would see with the schools. The MSBA that matches school money, there is no companion statute for the state in terms of public safety buildings. And the federal grants, as you can imagine, are, are going to be more for metropolitan areas and underserved constituents, and we're just, you know, it's not even going to, to make their radar, quite frankly, if we were to try to do that. So as we went through this process, the town administrator, through authorization from the select board, appointed a police station building committee. What we did there was we took two members of the select board, the town administrator and assistant town administrator, myself and the deputy chief, two members of the planning board, a member of the zoning bylaw review committee, a member of land use, a member from Ways and Means, and a member from capital budget, as well as for residents. And we did that so that as we went along in the project, we got the expertise from these individual board and committee members, so that they could come back to us with anything specific from their board and let us know, hey, this will work for our board, or it won't work, and it would allow KBA to, you know, maximize the time on their project. Okay? So some of the concerns that we've heard about as, as we've gone through to various boards, why is there no, no plan? What I will say is there is a preliminary plan, and I will show that to you, you've probably already seen it, but there is a preliminary plan that shows the conceptual new building on the current lot at forty-five Center Street, but it will show it along with the adjacent land from the open space of the Sculpture Park that we're hoping to, to rezone out of the Plan Development District. We can't do the final design, we can't complete that until we know how much of the land we are going to be able to use, and then KBA can come in and finalize the program at that point. If we were to do a fully said, fully completed set of designs at this point, right now, it roughly costs about ten percent of the construction costs, not the overall project cost, but the construction cost, so you can imagine that would not be very cost-effective to complete without town meeting support for the, for the project, not only the funding, but also the rezoning articles. Another issue that's come before us a couple of times is the landscaping. Kevin can certainly speak to these things and, and has a lot of experience with this, but they are very familiar with the concerns about the landscaping, the trees and the parking. They have landscape architects on staff which will get involved, will be very much involved during the design phases here, and they understand that they need to keep as many trees as possible to keep the abutters' wishes intact. Obviously, they don't want to see the back of our operations, and we don't want them in the position where they need to. So we are very familiar with that, and KBA has, has a working knowledge and experience on how to do that. Historical significance, as you can imagine, some of the historical issues have come up through our research. The station currently does not meet historic guidelines for the state, and the property has never been federally registered. So if you look at the state historical register, they concern themselves with the outside envelope of the building, they don't concern themselves with the inside, and basically, everything on the outside of that building, since we've been in it in nineteen ninety-two, has been changed. We've replaced cedar clapboard siding with vinyl siding, we've replaced the windows with double-hung aluminum-clad windows. There's modern construction materials that are on the front porch. That front porch has been redesigned and renovated a few times. Basically, every wall and ceiling in the building has been, internally has been repaired and renovated because of water damage, both from HVAC issues as well as water seepage with the groundwater. So since nineteen ninety-two, we've had a bunch of building permits that have come out to do these changes, but there have been no, nobody's come forward about any historic relevance on the building at this point, and it, it just appears that the town made a decision that they weren't going, they weren't going to maintain it as a historical asset. So at this point, how it fits into the design, it's better to just start new in that spot, so. Some issues have come up with parking, so KBA is, is well aware of the parking concerns that came back to us from the planning board before we ever appeared before them, and we were told, you know, basically, go conservative on the parking. We've done that, the, the plan that you will see here tonight calls for a design of sixty-six secured spaces and ten for the public. Again, that's best to anticipate what the planning board concerns would be. It is more than adequate to house us right now. Our operations now and through the foreseeable future would fit into this, this plan, no problem. But funny enough, when we went to land use, their concern was we didn't have enough parking, and they actually recommended that we look into a garage or underground parking, which the underground parking, I can say, say is not feasible. We've run it by the architect, and he can explain it better than I could, but we just wouldn't have the room to do that. So ultimately, we understand that parking will be an issue as we go forward. Again, if the project moves forward, that will be, you know, dealt with in the design phase, trying to keep everybody's needs and concerns in check. Firing range, the firing range has come up quite a bit. Yes, we do plan to move the current firing range. It is a four-bay range. It was updated about five or six years ago. Town meeting gave us roughly eighty thousand dollars to upgrade the range at that point in time. We put new components into the range, it's, it, the four-bay system is portable, it can come with us, and we also made the range rifle-rated. I will say that the firing range is, is one of those things that I would be very much opposed if, if we tried to take it out of the plan, because it allows for us to use the range twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. It allows for the technology of low light, no light, blue light, and moving and angling targets, where we can practice not only just duty weapon, but also the less lethal weapons, the taser and the rifle, and there's no disturbance to the neighbors. We could do firing at three AM just as easy as we could do it at ten AM, and we get no complaints from the neighbors. We're able to quickly put our personnel back on duty, and it also allows for us to continue our on-duty program sustainability, where we can literally take anybody on duty, take them down to the firing range and shoot rounds and practice any weaknesses, practice new drills, et cetera. So it also allows us, by allowing us to do this internally, we're not sending them out to different firing ranges that are restricted to daytime use, we're not paying overtime to send them out there, and we're not incurring any additional insurance costs by sending them out of town. So what's next, provided the funding and the zoning articles passed town meeting in May, we'd be looking at approximately ten months for the design phase. At that point, once designs is signed off, we'd look at two months or so to put out to bid for the project manager in the construction company, and then an eighteen to twenty-four month period to build. In the meantime, where would we go? There is money in the budget included in this, in this forty-six point two million. There is money in the budget included in this forty-six point two million for swing space to determine where we would go in the interim, and we would be looking at either a trailer farm, hopefully on town-owned property to lessen the cost, or any commercial space, short-term lease commercial space, or any combination of the above. And that would be, as I understand it, sent over to the Economic Development, provided the funding comes through on town meeting. So, here is the proposed site layout and what I would call the plan, and I believe Kevin would call the plan at this point. You'll see on here, there's a hinged building, so the peach color is the new hinged building design. Overlaying that, you'll see a red dotted line, that's the current police station. And the red line down to the bottom of that, that basically goes horizontally across, that's basically the property line that separates forty-five Center Street from the open space that we're asking to rezone out of that Grandview Plan Development District. This design right here, at this point, allows a lot of advantages from an architectural standpoint. It's closer to Center Street, so we're moving it away from the abutters. It's going to be closer to the street than the current building. There's a minimal impact to the current open space. And again, our aim is to use a minimal amount and return to the PDD what we don't need. This provides maximum distance from the station entrance to the intersection of Center and Bedford Streets, so we're not bottling up with cruisers. The auxiliary building, which is that peach building in the back that basically gets cut in half by that red line, that would house our command post, motorcycle, mountain bikes, and other equipment that doesn't belong in the Sallyport because of liability issues. But that will also give a visual and sound barrier to the abutters as well, and it's going to minimize the impact to existing mature trees if the site is laid out this way. So, there are some huge advantages to that site. As we go forward, we'll show you some of the designs. Again, the biggest thing I can say about the designs is nothing is definitive at this point. But what hopefully these designs will show is that KBA is willing to work with the community and the Police Station Building Committee to design the building to look how the community wants it to look. So, the very first one that you'll see is a colonial design. This concept, you know, fits into that New England feel. It's, again, preliminary design to capture that colonial feel of the common and the surrounding area. So, they looked at Grandview and said, okay, how can we incorporate the look of Grandview? It doesn't necessarily show, but can you see on the right side, it does hinge back as it's shown on the site plan. The second design, this looks more like the current police station, and this came about because the Police Station Building Committee, a couple of members, expressed some concern or some desire that the new building looked like the old. So, again, you'll see that this looks more like the current police station, but is still going to maintain the design efficiencies that KBA plans to build into the final plan. And then finally, you have some traditional views. This one here is a little bit more of a classic with the glass up top and the columns with a flat roof. Again, it brings in the brick architectural look like Town Hall and the town buildings that are over this side of Seer Street. And then the final one, again, very preliminary, looks more like the current Town Hall in the annex with the sloped roof and the black architectural shingles. So, again, it just shows that all of these are options, and nothing has been decided yet. Any questions can certainly be brought to Paul, John, or I or Kevin, and Kevin is here as well to answer any questions that any of you have. So, I appreciate your patience listening to that again. But hopefully, some people in the audience have picked up a couple of new things, and hopefully, it's made it clear for anybody who had some concerns. So, I thank you.
Mr. Chairman, may I add? One slide that we need to add before town meeting, since we keep getting some feedback on it, is sort of a slide that identifies funding and timing of funding. So, this, as everybody knows, is going to town meeting, week from tonight, or starting week from tonight, for, to be approved, as any project is traditionally approved. It's going as a bond, it'll be two-thirds vote. And the question comes about, why aren't we using any free cash or any other resources at the same time? And our plan is to use some free cash or other resources to fund this project as we move forward. We plan to get it approved at this town meeting, and then it will take, I think there was a slide in there, I can't remember, maybe it's not in there anymore, about, it's going to take about a year to design, ten months to a year of design. It's going to take a couple of years to build it. So, we're going to borrow muddy, short-term, ban money over the next couple of years. And we will have an opportunity to use free cash to pay down those bans. We'll have an opportunity to use free cash when we go out for a permanent borrowing. And the idea for us is to keep as much free cash as we can in our coffers for when we do go out to borrow what will be the biggest bond the town has ever taken out, that we have the resources so that we can maintain and protect our AAA rating. So, that's sort of the plan that's been worked out through the administration and Ways and Means and how we're going to move forward on that. So, well, I have a slide, and nail that down for town meeting. But just because I know there was going to be some questions on that, because you've already heard them, I just wanted to talk a little bit about that. One other point to make, since we're talking about all three articles, just to go back to this slide that the chief talked about, and he talked about the red line that divides the current property line between the parcels. This red line that I'm going over with my cursor here, that's the PDD. That's where all the later in the PDD is, including all the parcels. One of the articles is to remove this parcel in green from the PDD. And then the second article is to rezone it BL, which is what the police station zoning is. So, that's why there's two. There's one just to remove that piece, the second one is to be L. And as the chief mentioned, and Paul's mentioned in every meeting, the intention would be to come back after we have the final design at some point and add back any land that's unused back into the PDD.
Excellent, thank you. Where do I start? Nick, we'll start with you, questions?
I don't have questions, but I'd like to make a comment, if that's okay. This is now my fourth time seeing this presentation. Now, that's a bad thing, right? And chief, it gets better every time. I mean, in all seriousness, I appreciate that your presentation evolves after you've heard from a board committee. You know, listening to the plan board, you know, talk about land use, Ways and Means. You know, everyone's asked really smart questions along the way, and you've adapted that presentation to kind of meet those objections or concerns or issues kind of head-on, which I appreciate. You know, I think, I don't know if it's worth it, you know, but maybe taking an extra minute at town meeting to kind of talk a little bit more about the history. I feel like we're kind of left holding a bag of issues. And, you know, it's important for town meetings, especially new folks, to recognize that, you know, our options have been limited, you know? And this really is the best path forward to get us a police station that is functional to meet the needs of Burlington today and moving forward. You know, you won't see an objection. For me, you know, I mean, parking there is tight, the space is tight. You know, I think that we've come a long way to make concessions about ensuring that we're going to take a piece of the land. You know, we're not going to go all in on the whole thing just to throw in parking. You know, I know some folks along the journey have mentioned shared parking. And, you know, to that I say, with who? You know, where are I type on parking as it is? You know, we just, the town center continually grows tighter on space, and, you know, we're trying to keep that campus feel. And I think it's important that we do so, but with it comes certain concessions. So, you know, for me, this is looking really good. I appreciate the fiscal responsibility of not just come up, you know, plans and try to put those forward if town meeting were to say no, you know, and we'll see what they say. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Jim?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chief, one thing that I've been asked is, why not rehab it? And if you could, for the public, explain the costs associated with rehabbing a building with regards to the seismic code, the building codes, especially because it's a building sitting on a stone foundation that was put in over a hundred and twenty years ago. If you could just address that for the public.
I'm going to take it, Joe.
The, one of the biggest misconceptions out there is that renovating is less expensive than building new. If you were just doing cosmetic renovations, yes, it's probably a little cheaper. But when you start talking about the wholesale gut renovation, it would be required to be making this...
Can you bring that a little closer for people?
By making that, by bringing the existing building into current codes that we would be required to by the sheer magnitude of the amount of work that would be needed to done to it. We would need to, as you mentioned, the seismic code. Currently, the building doesn't meet the, I believe it's an importance factor four for a public safety building, which means in a seismic event, it needs to stay operational. With a rubblestone foundation, that wouldn't be, we wouldn't be able to achieve that. Like anything, you could add, you could put money to it and reinforce it and make it work. But now you're talking close to the same cost or probably more than what putting new reinforced concrete foundation walls in would be. It also doesn't meet any kind of the seismic for, as you build the layer cake up from the foundation to the framing, there's nothing that's really tying the framing to the foundation. Again, as part of an importance factor four for the building, we'd need to rip that out, get that into a point where we can attach those. Same thing with the roof loads, the snow loads that we're required to have wouldn't be supported by the current structure, so we'll be reinforcing the structure there. That just deals with the elements of the building, of the structural issues. Doesn't get into talking about, we often talked about meeting the current energy code. The current energy code used to exempt existing buildings. If you weren't touching a piece of the work, you could leave it as is. It was considered a existing non-conforming. The new energy code, in which Burlington is a member of the stretch code communities, requires that all construction be brought up to current building codes. So, something as simple as the existing building with a floor slab was now required by the energy code to have insulation underneath the slab on grade. So, now you're into taking up an existing floor, putting a new one down after you've put insulation in it. The exterior envelope would completely be, would be gutted down to just metal, just the regular wood studs, and then rebuilt out. As you can see, it's not just a simple ad-reno where there's really, the structure is almost a hindrance to your efficiency in building. So, that's why we determined that the extent of the renovations to the existing building would probably be equal to or greater than to build a brand-new, tear it down and rebuild with new construction. And we, that doesn't also, if we were to renovate, alleviate some of the problems that you have to do, the compromise to the schedule, as the chief mentioned. Currently, there's a lot of corridors that are very wide, the stairs that aren't the right slopes with the right tread and riser heights, fire separations, handicapped accessibility. All of those issues would be compromises to any build, any new fit-out work that would go into that building. So, the building really is, in the final analysis, the building is not an asset to the overall project. Looking at it as a fifty-year build-out, it's actually a detriment. So, as part of our feasibility study, our recommendation is, is that the building has outlived its usefulness to the community and to the proposed function, and recommending that as part of this project, it be torn down and a new one built in its place.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to follow up, I highly encourage town meeting members that haven't toured the police station, reach out to the chief. He's available just about any time to give a tour of the station, to see what you're voting on, see what... We can talk about it all day, but you have to actually see it to, I want to say appreciate it, but you have to see it to appreciate how bad it is. I use this analogy of if you've got a beautiful tree in your front yard and you want to keep it, it looks beautiful, but it's rotting on the inside. That tree's a liability to you, could fall on someone, fall on your house. So, even though it might look nice on the outside, it's not safe on the inside. So, it's, well, it's way overdue. So, I encourage town meeting members to please tour the station if you haven't, and then you'll understand, I think, a little bit more of what we're all talking about. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Nick.
There you go.
I will. You did? That was first.
Did you say anything?
Yeah, yeah. Was I sleeping?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Chief, for, again, giving us that presentation. I'm sure you can probably do it in your sleep now, you've done it so many times. But it is a great presentation, it's very thorough. I think after all the meetings we've been to, we always hear someone say they appreciate how thorough you've been and how detailed it is, so it is excellent, so thank you again.
Thank you.
My question is for Kevin, and Kevin, I know the answer, but I want to bring this back up because I asked you this after Ways and Means, but for my fellow board members and for people watching at home. Can you just go into more detail on why, after land use, we heard, you know, can we check into underground parking, structured parking, to not only increase the parking capacity for future years, for the town center, for events in the town center, but also another benefit would be cut down on the impervious surface for the whole project? But can you just explain, you gave me a great answer, why it's not feasible for this particular project and plot of land that, not only with the size of it and the cost, why it's not really feasible to have either structured or underground parking on it?
Yep. I guess the biggest issue is, is that if you're going to put underground parking into the building, it would be most helpful and most economical if the, to progress here, the land or the slope of the land was conducive to that. The land is not really flat, but not really a big slope, so it's not like you can walk out the backside from the basement at grade level. So, you'd be ending, you'd end up actually probably needing more square footage to accomplish the same goal, to put parking probably underneath the building. Putting a surface parking garage probably wouldn't be really feasible with the size of the space that we have to deal with, keeping in mind that the biggest problem with either going underground or going above is the circulation to get you up or down. The roadways in the vehicle access to get down into, underneath the building would probably eat up more of the surface parking. We did a quick little count, we'd probably get between eighteen and twenty-two cars under the building. But that's not necessarily free space also. There's a cost associated with putting vehicles under the building. Although you may not, you're still going to probably have all of your walls, you're going to now increase the cost by putting fire-rated construction on the ceiling of the parking area. Like I said, the square footage on the site to get roadways, a two-way ramp in and out of that, that space would be very... It would chew up an awful lot of space on the surface. That we're already kind of challenged with the site development, trying to keep onto one end of it as much as possible and preserve the green space at the Sculpture Park. We would probably, if you had a garage, it would probably eat up almost the entire site. So, and I don't even want to throw a guess out there at what the cost would be to put it above ground. But the problem also, costs that would be associated with putting underground is we've got about fourteen thousand square feet of program space underneath the building, including the firing range. We'd now have to find someplace to put that. That means either a bigger footprint, which means we're expanding our use of the site, or we're going up to a third story, which would have its own issues with probably zoning for the height limitations that are probably in the, currently in the zoning codes. So, there's, it just didn't make a lot of sense to try and do that on a smaller site with a smaller occupancy or use of the facility.
Awesome, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Chief, again, for that presentation that we're all very familiar with at this point. I think it shows you've done a great job of listening to the community, the questions, concerns, and addressing them. One question, can you talk about why, you know, you talked about the other locations that were considered. Can you talk about why this location is ideal for you as a functioning police department and, you know, addressing the needs of the community?
Sure. So, number one, it's familiarity. Everybody in town knows where the police station is. But what we've been able to do now, since we've been here, which really, we started here in the annex, and before that, we were at the museum. For our purposes from management, we're able to develop car plans or sector assignments where we can respond very quickly to five of the schools. We can get right down into the center of ninety-five and go either way, down towards Bedford or off of Wind Street, even going down into Wurbin, it allows us to turn around quickly. Even going down into Woburn, it allows us to turn around quickly if we have something going on on the southbound side, et cetera. It allows for that, you know, ability to quickly respond to these incidents. Also, when an officer is out of service and they're at the station, should an emergency happen, they're, they're basically centrally located where they can go all the way down to Park Ave, or they could get over to like Belmont and Muller, et cetera, like that. And we're not tucked over into one end of town where we then have to come out and develop different car plans or times for the officers to start their shift. So it's just ease of operations and efficiency of the operation, that's the best place for it. Did I answer that for you?
Yes, you did. Thank you. My next question is, I don't know if you addressed this, but how involved or what has the communication been like with the abutters?
So we had a, a meeting with the abutters and the abutters, in my opinion, seemed very positive about the project. They did bring up concerns, concerns about the trees, which we immediately brought back to KBA. And the, and the good thing about it is KBA had brought up the trees to us long before we ever mentioned it to them. So they're aware that there are people that live back there that, you know, if we were to go back there and cut down all the trees, you're going to affect their quality of life. We want to be good neighbors. Those are the concerns that have been brought up and we've immediately brought them back and that, that's at the forefront of our, our ideas as we move forward into the, into the design.
Great. And then lastly, just, I think these are just more comments. Some of the concerns I've heard about are, from the community is the, are the transition space, and I know this is not something that we want to really dive into without knowing how town meeting is going to vote, but there is going to be a two to three year period where our police department is in a flex space and I'm sure other towns have done this in the, in the process of building a new police station, fire station, whatever it is. So might just be good to have a, even anecdotal evidence from other towns that have done this and those trailer spaces, what they look like, how functional they can be, just to ease the minds of people in town that, you know, we're going to have a fully functional and effective police department in those two to three years. My other comment is, on one slide, the proposed, this is so nitpicky, but the proposed, proposed site layout slide, it's, at least for me, very hard to see the layout. And maybe, maybe it'll be easier at town meeting on a bigger screen, but it might be good to zoom in a little bit on that space with the red lines. You know, not everybody's going to have that, I'm sure it's in the backup, but not everybody has it right in front of them. Usually people are going to be squinting their eyes and looking at the screen. So maybe a separate slide with that, so it's really clear what that proposed site layout is for people to see. And then, you know, because, you know, with the dotted lines as to where things are going to go, it's a little unclear on this, on the screen. And then lastly, and I appreciated John, appreciated John mentioning this, is just like what the zoning, specifically zoning funding is pretty clear what that article means, but the two zoning articles and what they mean, what you're voting on, you, you made it clear saying it, but it's not clear in the slides or anything. You know, we're voting on this to be rezoned and this to be, that kind of thing, so that it's very clear at town meeting, a yes vote is, means this, but hopefully everybody is clear about voting yes on this. And that's all I have. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
Okay.
Just one quick follow-up. To your point, Sarah, there's a, an abut on this committee, so just, just to have that voice on the committee is really important.
Okay, so everybody spoke, we've, we've gone over this. Chief, you're getting really good at it. One of these days you'll get an Academy Award. You're doing a great job with it.
Thank you.
There isn't too much to go over, except for us getting the word out there as far as this board and everyone else in town to make sure that they're, they're all up to page on this. Is, we've said this a thousand times and town meeting has asked us a thousand times, the more information they have, the better it is for them. I don't think it can be any clearer what we have for information here, how bad the building really is, what it really needs, the firing range. I mean, I wouldn't think, I wouldn't think you wouldn't want a firing range in that building to move across next door. I, I just can't, the hottest thing I said was the other night was the zoning article. I think that's going to be the hottest thing is for people to grasp the fact that is, we're going to zone this for the police station and whatever we don't use, we're going to zone it back. I think that's the hottest part for me, people are going to try to understand. I mean, she's right with her, with her, the screen, make sure it's all big print, make sure they can understand everything. I can't, I hope to God I'm wrong, but I can't see this not going through. I really can't. The funding's been there, we've talked about the funding, we've talked about everything. I think it's a matter of us as a board and all the other boards in town to get on board with you and realize that our police station is, like I said earlier tonight, is one of the best stations in the state. We have top-notch police officers that are really well-educated. Why not give them what they need after all these years to finally have a new police station? Finally, I've been on the board nine years, we've been talking since before I got on the board, so hoping everything goes well. All I can do is wish you the best and I'm behind, behind this 110%.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, oh yes, I forgot, I'm still going to do this. I was getting into that too. I need a motion for those couple of articles. Is there anything else?
Make a motion to recommend favorably on articles 20, 32, and 33 for the police department.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Five zero zero.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Chief.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Chief. Okay, we have articles six, 17, and 22.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The three left are annual articles. Article six is the authorization of the departmental revolving accounts. Several years ago, the Municipal Monetization Act required these articles to be put into a bylaw, but then also required the annual approval of spending limits in, for those revolving accounts. So there's more revolving accounts, but they're set up by different statutes. These are ones that are specifically departmental revolving accounts. So there's a list of them in there. There's no change from last year in the amounts or anything in the article seven. Article, do you want me to go one by one or?
Just, yep. Any questions on that article? No? Go right ahead, sir.
Article 17 is another annual article, sort of a housekeeping. So several years ago, the state legislation required that local cable access funding be set up in, in a, an enterprise fund, which ours is, and which requires us each year at the, at the annual town meeting to appropriate, authorize a not to exceed number for our transfer of the PEG funds, that is, public educational government channel funds, so that's a, on cable bills, there's a little bit of a fee that comes back to the town. The town gets that fee, we deposit it into enterprise fund, and then we forward it on to BCAT for them to spend on their operations. So this is annual article, the not to exceed number for this year is $575,000. With the way people have been cutting the cord over the years, that it's very unlikely that it will get to that amount, but it's, we set it as a not to exceed, so if it comes in less than that, it's okay.
Okay. Any questions on that one?
Yes, sir. John, you may have the answer, but last time we had counsel here, we were talking about this. We talked about the whole cord cutting problem and how streaming was trying to be addressed, I think, at the state level. Has there been any update on that? Nothing.
It's going to be more.
All right. That's it?
Yeah.
Okay.
And the last article is article 22, which is the Fourth of July Parade. I don't know if Nick wants to take that one.
Yeah, happy to. So I will be staying from this one as a co-chair of the Fourth of July Parade. You know, for, since, since COVID, the Fourth of July Parade has been asking town meeting for $20,000 to help put on the parade. Before that, it was 15, and it went up due to COVID. You know, the goal is to really work toward a state where the committee itself can, can fund itself and that that dollar amount is reduced or even taken away entirely. You know, but at this current point, this juncture, businesses continue to find it difficult to, to donate. And those that do, we greatly appreciate, but you know, the dollar amounts are becoming smaller, requiring a lot more effort on committees' parts. And I think this goes for anyone, right? You talk to adopt a class, you talk to, you know, any, any fundraiser that's kind of going on and folks, you know, have a really hard time, you know, opening their wallet, you know, multiple times a year, which I can get to appreciate. You know, so we're at a, at an odd point right now. But yeah, you know, it, it goes directly into putting on the, on the parade and, you know, making sure we have performances and participants, as well as police details and everything else that goes along with, with running the parade on the, the Fourth of July.
Thank you.
And just to add, the funding source for this one is free cash.
Say that one more time?
The funding source for this article is free cash.
Okay. Just a quick commentary, you do realize that we do march in the parade, so that's all part of it.
I'm ready.
And one of the best parts is seeing how happy the chairman is during that march.
Absolutely love it.
So happy as David's like?
It is.
I bet it was last year when it was pouring rain.
It wasn't, it didn't bother me at all.
You know, actually, if I may, what made last year even better was
The dancing with the pompos?
That, yeah, that definitely sold it. But no, it was, it was the fact that despite the rain, how many people were going to tend us to watch the parade, right? And like, and that's why we do it, right? Folks don't recognize that the Fourth of July Parade isn't run by this board, it's run by residents. It's just in the last seven, eight years, a little longer, that's like, remember, has been on the committee, you know, and that's just happenstance, really. But no, I mean, I, I think getting another chance to, to walk in the parade and seeing all the people is, is half the fun, honestly.
All right. So moving on, because the parade's so good. We needed a motion on those three, right?
I'll do a, a motion, Mr. Chairman, on, I guess Nick's going to extend on 22, so we'll go, motion to recommend favorably on articles six and 17.
Second.
Motion made a second on six and 17. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
And thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to recommend favorably on article 22.
Second.
Motion made a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Abstain? Stand. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, just, there are four other articles that this board would typically take a position on, however they've been withdrawn. We talked about it last time, but that is, just for the record, again, it's articles two, four, five, and 19 have all been withdrawn.
Thank you, sir. Can I get the approval for the minutes for the 3:25 and 4:08 and 4:22? Well, three of them.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from 3:25, 4:08, and 4:22.
Second. You have to abstain.
I have to abstain from 3:25.
That's the one?
Yes.
Okay. I will do.
Make a motion to approve minutes, amend that motion to just approve the minutes from 3:25.
Second.
So move to seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Propose, abstain?
Stand, aye.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from 4:08 and 4:22.
Second.
Motion made a seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay, let's skip right down to a, a motion to adjourn so we can go watch the Bruins game. Does somebody want to actually talk about this subcommittee?
I'm going to, I'll do, I'll be quick.
Bruins game's on.
I know, but I got a, some committees to talk about. I won't discuss the sculpture part, Barbara gave us an update already. Fire department, month of April, 456 calls. The cause of interest were a vehicle into the building, the Santander Bank on Cambridge Street. The building suffered significant damage. They also extinguished an oven fire and kept damage to a minimal, minimum. And they rescued ducklings from a storm drain, which is always a good story to hear. And even though the chamber is my subcommittee, Ms. Carley and I attended a meeting today that was at the request of the chamber, but it was a, I'll, I'll defer to her because she's hit the road running and doing a fantastic job, and I'll just defer to her and allow her to, to talk about that meeting this morning.
Nick?
Yeah, quickly, so ISAC has the opportunity to get some fresh blood into the pool, and so they had put out, you know, advertisement and got four interested parties, which is fantastic. So, you know, that continues to be a progressive effort within the community. I know we talked about this at our last strategic planning meeting, but I have a couple of conversations happening in the effort to find out how we're going to spend the DEI dollars that were provided to us by town meeting last year. And we can provide a report on, with some avenues of, of progress to town meeting in, next week. And then, we just talked about it, but you know, don't forget, folks, the parade is July 4th, and I look forward to seeing you there.
Thank you. Michael?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Real quick, I don't have a subcommittee, but I wanted to give everyone a reminder that thanks to Joyce Delagans, our angel in Terrace Hall, May is the month of kindness, and it's so simple, but so effective that to do something kind this month for a neighbor or a friend, so much crazy stuff going on in the world right now that I think everyone could use a little kindness, so let's celebrate the month of kindness well. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Sarah?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Couple updates from Board of Health. This Saturday, May 11th, from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. is the Community Health Fair at Burlington High School, which is a great event. Also, a week from Saturday, May 18th, from 8:30 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. is Household Hazardous Waste Collection Day, and that will be at Fox Hill School. And also just wanted to comment on what Jim referred to, we, him and I were able to attend a meeting this morning with a group of stakeholders in town, including folks from the business community, the Chamber of Commerce, town leadership, and elected officials, just to have a discussion on the state of the commercial sector in Burlington and, you know, some of the concerns that are out there for the near future and beyond. It was a really great conversation and it will continue to be ongoing, but it was essentially talking about how we live and how we work has changed. It was changing before COVID and the pandemic just accelerated that change. And now as a community, as a town, we have to be proactive and, you know, capitalize on the things that we can do to adapt to these changes. So it's a big discussion, it's, like I said, ongoing, there are a lot of moving parts, everything is sort of interconnected. And the decisions that we make as a town and as elected officials around housing and zoning impact the business community as well, so, and they're paying attention to that. So we just have to consistently be thinking about how to make things work. And, you know, there's a lot of little administrative things we can do to streamline and simplify things, but just a high level, it has to be a frequent and consistent dialogue between the town leaders in the commercial sector and just being sort of unified and, and telling that story about what's coming down the line. And without getting into all the details, I just wanted to let everybody know that those conversations are happening and, yeah. And it was really, it was, there's, there's things that people are concerned about, but I came out of that conversation, you know, in, in a positive light and looking to the future.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Chairman, real quick, May brings us an opportunity for, to honor some of our employees. We talked about DPW Appreciation Month coming up, so we'll certainly get a chance to do that, but also this week for another section of our employees. It's teacher appreciation this week and also nurses appreciation, which also includes school nurses, so just wanted to mention that.
Thank you.
Good.